Good morning. I'd like to call to order the Housing Committee hearing for January 31st. It's 10:00 AM in room 312. My name is Luke Ebslin. I am the New Housing Committee Chair, in case you were wondering why Troy Hashimoto is not here. He moved on, he went out to the Senate. He is downstairs. So we thank him for all of his good work last session, and he's got some big shoes for us to fill this session. I'm joined here by Vice Chair Mica Ayu, Representative Keela, Representative Miyaki, Representative Todd, and Representative Onishi. Just a quick note before we dive into the agenda. When it comes to housing issues, there obviously this is one of the biggest problems that we face in Hawaii, and many of the solutions are controversial, and they pit vested stakeholders sometimes against each other, and there's not easy answers for a lot of the issues that we face. So I just want to urge everybody, members of the committee and members of the public, anybody on Zoom, to please remain respectful here in your testimony as we try and work through these issues. We have potentially one of these controversial bills on the agenda today, and we'll have many more as we work through this session here. So yeah, we'll remain respectful as we work towards solutions. Just some housekeeping notes. We will have a lot of testimony, I believe, today, so in order to allow as many people to testify as possible, there will be a two-minute time limit per testifier. Once you reach the end of that two minutes, either myself or Vice Chair Ayu will politely ask you to wrap up your testimony. Because morning hearings must adjourn prior to the noon floor session, not all testifiers may have the opportunity to testify. In that event, please know that your written testimony will be considered by the committee. Please keep yourself muted and your video off while waiting to testify, and after your testimony is complete, the Zoom chat function will allow you to chat with the technical staff only. Please use the chat only for technical issues. If you're disconnected unexpectedly, you may attempt to rejoin the meeting. If disconnected while presenting testimony, you may be allowed to continue if time permits. Please note that the House is not responsible for any bad internet connections on the testifier's end. In the event of a network failure, it may be necessary to reschedule the hearing or schedule a meeting for decision-making. In that case, an appropriate notice will be posted. Please avoid using any trademark or copyrighted images. Please refrain from profanity or uncivil behavior. Such behavior may be grounds for removal from the hearing without the ability to rejoin. Also welcome, Rep Matsumoto, and I'm not sure if I welcome Rep Todd here also. So, thank you all, we, and thank you all for being here. With that, we can dive into the agenda. First item on the agenda is HB 2214 relating to housing. It provides a new source of interim financing for affordable housing projects using housing programs under Chapter 201H. Vice Chair for the testimony.
Evan from NIAAP. In support.
Hello Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. Evan Oyey on behalf of NIAAP Hawaii. Of course, congratulations on your first housing hearing. But NIAAP does stand in strong support of HB 2214. The Affordable Housing Credits Program established under this measure would greatly increase the utilization and continued utilization of 201H projects. You know, NIAAP has been concerned that with the increase in interest rates and construction costs, this may have a negative impact on future 201H projects that are coming out. So this Affordable Housing Credits Program does create a financeable tool which will help unlock and hopefully further increase the utilization of 201H as we look to provide more housing units for our residents. Happy to answer any questions, and you know, thank you.
Okay, yeah, we'll save a question to that Evan. Okay, next is Craig Nakamoto, HCDA. And with comments.
Morning Chair Ebslin, Vice Chair Ayu, and members of the committee. Craig Nakamoto, I'm the Executive Director of Hawaii Community Development Authority. We have comments and concerns today. As far as the intent of the bill, I kind of laud the, you know, the introducers of bill for their intent in drafting this bill and trying to address the housing shortage in the state. It is one of the governor's top priorities in his administration. What I commented on is those provisions of the bill that require a state authority or Hawaii Community Development Authority to monitor and track and then eventually possibly transfer the credits that are generated. I would prefer that these kind of functions, since this is kind of aimed at a county function, that those functions really, I think, should belong with the county and not with the state agency like mine. I look at it from an efficiency standpoint, also from sort of less government involved in this, just counties. And then also, I think, since it's their program to administer, I believe that the monitoring should reside in the county. Thank you Chair, Vice Chair, and members of the committee for the opportunity to testify and provide our comments. Thank you.
Thank you Craig. Jeremy Schornstein on Zoom. In support.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning Chair Ebslin, Vice Chair Ayu, and committee members. My name is Jeremy Schornstein, and I submitted testimony in support of HB 2214. And the reason for that is the more than doubling of interest rates in such a short period of time has rendered the 201H program, a program that's approved over 5,600 affordable and workforce housing units over the past eight years, effectively unusable for future 201H projects. And these are specifically for 201H projects that do not utilize low-income housing tax credit, which is language that's included in this bill. So HB 2214 is intended to create a short-term privately funded subsidy to breathe life back into the 201H program so it can continue to be utilized to create more workforce and affordable housing during this high-interest-rate environment. So to state clearly, the three primary benefits to the people of Hawaii are, one, no public funds are required. This creates a program that creates a privately-funded subsidy. Two, there is the continued creation of affordable housing via 201H program. And three, it allows for the front-loading of the creation of affordable housing that's required for market rate housing projects. So it effectively decouples the affordable housing requirement from the market rate housing project, which allows all the affordable housing that would have been required to be introduced into the market immediately and start serving the folks that need it as fast as possible. So, thank you for your time, and I respectfully encourage you to support this bill. Happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you Jeremy. Is Pamela Tumpap here from our Chamber of Congress testify in support? Damian Waikoloa, Hawaii Yimby Group in support? Any other individuals wanting to support on this matter HB 2214?
All right, seeing none. Members, any questions for any of the testifiers? Vice Chair Ayu.
I guess Craig, I have some questions about the tracking issue. So I guess I understand your guys' comments on the tracking issue, but I mean, what if, what if a developer is the one like building the, that wants the credits? You guys wouldn't want to track, they either want to sell the credits or buy the credits and develop in your, in HCDA properties? That's something you don't want to be responsible for? I don't understand how we would go between HCDA and the county and HHFTC and some of the other organizations.
Yeah, thanks for the question represented by you. So, you know, within, for example, our Kakaako Development District, we have had 201H projects that have been reviewed by the Kakaako Community Development District Board. They come to us for review, for review, but not necessarily for approval, it's for information. Once, and it's a process where the applicant comes to us and says, we want to be exempt from, for example, setbacks or some other requirement of ours to make, so that it makes it easier for them to develop. So we sort of agree on the list of exemptions that the applicant is seeking, and then it's brought to the board. And so we've had two projects like that. One, I believe, is the 690 pole kind of project. And then the other is a project by Stanford Cars. So it comes to the HCDA board, and then we, it's looked at, it's informational, and then the applicant goes to the city council and gets other approvals. So it's not that we're not interested in it, represented by you, but it's just not, I don't believe it's really ours to track the credits. And I think it's either something that HHFTC would track or something that the counties would track.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Members, further questions? Actually, sorry Craig, I have a question for you. So just to clarify, so a 201H project in HCDA is still getting approval from Honolulu City Council also?
That's, that's my understanding. So it comes to the HCDA board for information. We, you know, it's looked at, and then I believe that the next step or steps is it goes to city council.
Okay, so there is a, there is a county function then for all HCDA development?
There's a county function for the 201H process, right? The county function for another HCDA project is, a lot of these projects, most of them go to counties for building permits.
Okay, and just to clarify then, you support the utilization of the credits within HCDA? Your main concern is just the tracking of the credits and the interface with county?
I support the idea of credits, but I just don't think that a state authority or HCDA should be tracking this. If this is going to be used by the county, then I think the county should be tracking it. So I would suggest that references to state authority or HCDA in this bill maybe respectfully be deleted.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Members, any further questions? All right, next item on the agenda HB 2548 relating to accessory dwelling units. This establishes the accessory dwelling unit loan program under HHFTC to provide loans for the development of accessory dwelling units. Vice Chair Ayu for the testimony.
Louis Alvaria, BNF. With comments. Dean Minakami, HHFTC in support. Thank you Craig. Alice Lee, County Council of Maui in support. Audrey Suga Nakagawa, AARP. In support. Morning.
Good morning. Good morning Chair Ebslin, members of the committee. I'm Audrey Suga Nakagawa. I'm the Advocacy Director for AARP. AARP stands on its testimony in support of this measure. You know, ADUs really is a needed option, and it benefits people of all ages. It allows homeowners to expand their homes to accommodate an elderly parent who may need support and assistance as they're aging. It also helps their adult children who need someplace to start as they try to save for their own homes. And it also helps students and others who are seeking an affordable option. So, you know, the ADUs also can be a source of additional income for an older person who, you know, who's on fixed income. So we really welcome these type of opportunities of having these type of financing mechanisms that would expand the ADU market. So thank you very much for allowing us to testify in support of this measure.
Thank you. Madeline. McCague, CNHA. I probably butchered that last name, okay. Damian Waikoloa, Hawaii Yimby Group in support. David Fukuzawa, Individual in support. Dan Gardner, Individual in support. Anyone in person or on Zoom wishing to testify on this matter HB 2548? Seeing none Chair?
Members, any questions? Vice Chair Ayu.
For Dean, I guess. For HHFTC, I guess. Craig, sorry. I guess my only question is on the funding compo, I mean, just how we determine which individuals get these 1% loans? Is there like a requirement for need or like what the purpose of the ADU is going to be for?
I don't think it's in this bill. I think it's just, my belief is just, we want to encourage it.
Okay.
Because you've got, in the first instance, you got to own the property rights.
Right. But I'm saying like, is there any determination that, you know, a person with financial need will get this over just, you know, a person that wants to get a 1% interest on a $300 loan, $300,000 loan?
I don't, I don't recall seeing it in the bill. I'm not saying it's a bad idea. I'm just saying, my understanding was that, like I said, you got to own the property.
Right, I understand that.
You've got all income levels there.
Okay, okay. Thank you Chair.
Sorry, I have, oh, Rep Onishi, question?
Yeah Craig, I have a question for you. So, the budget and finance has an issue with how this fund would be sustainable. And at a 1% interest, what would be the cost to manage this fund?
It would, to be honest, okay, it depends on the size of the fund, but typically we would probably not need more than one position. To do it.
One position?
Yeah. So, you know, and so as a, as a percentage, it's hard to say what exactly, and there's a dollar cost to a position, but probably just one position, because we have the overhead to support this kind of program.
So, in here, if I'm not mistaken, I didn't see where the term or length of the loan is specified. So, if the legislature gives money into this fund and you're loaning it out up to 300,000 per individual at 1% interest, how does this fund sustain itself?
Well, the principal is paid back at some point.
At some point, but?
But if, typically if they're going to refinance or something like that, we'd get paid off. So, but also, yeah, there's got to be a due date on the loan also.
So how much do you think needs to be initially put into this fund to make it a worthwhile fund that's going to end up being sustainable?
I don't know exactly what the demand is, but I would assume it's fairly substantial. So I, you know, I'm trying to remember what the original appropriation was.
It's blank.
It's blank, yeah. So, So, um, I think, what is it, we were saying? The loans are, loans are not to exceed 300,000. So, what did we say, a hun? A hundred? A hundred loans would be 30 million, something like that? So, I mean, it's just.
And that's one-time loans, right? I mean, it's like, you're not going to recoup that 330 million in a year, right?
For maybe five, 10 years or something like that, yeah.
Thank you, thank you, Chair.
Uh, members, any further questions? I've, just two, I guess, clarifying questions. One, in the language of the bill, it says, um, that the principal, together with the interest, shall be repaid by the non-depository community development financial institution borrower in installments as determined by the corporation. Um, so my read of that is that you folks can develop rules to determine the term length? Do you need? Well, and this is in regards to BNF's comment saying it's difficult to determine whether the proposed revolving fund would be self-sustaining. So given their comments on that, and given that there's an indeterminate loan period in here, do you folks need, um, uh, more specificity in statute? Or, or is that enough for you guys to determine a, a loan period?
I think that, I think we can work it out by rule, but, um, you know, you raised an, you raised a question there about the, uh, where the 1% goes, because, um, if it goes to CDFI, I mean, they, they may need that much to operate the program. Uh, you know, if we need one position, you know, if that's general funded, I don't think that's going to be a problem. Or, or, you know, or funded otherwise through our, um, our other, you know, some, actually, it has to be this, so, yeah, if we were general funded or, um, on that position, I think we can work that out.
Okay, yeah. And, and my understanding is that CDFIs can charge up to 6%, so they can, they can pay for their maintenance of the program through that. Okay, and sorry, final question then. On BNF's concern then, it's difficult to determine whether the proposed revolving fund would be self-sustaining. Is there anything that you see unique in this revolving fund which sort of triggered that language from them? Or, or is it in your?
They generally don't like.
Okay.
Special funds.
Okay, all right, thank you. Members, any further questions? Seeing none, uh, thank you. The next item on our agenda is HB 2218 relating to the Hawaiian Homes Commission Act. This increases the loan limit for direct loans provided by the Department of Hawaiian Homelands to 75% of the maximum single residence loan amount allowed in Hawaii by the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development Housing Administration, uh, instead of 50% as currently outlined in Section 215 of the Hawaiian Homes Commission Act. Vice Chair, for the testimony.
Uh, Department of Hawaiian Homelands in support. Thank you. Um, is there anyone else in the audience or on Zoom wishing to testify on this matter, HB 2218? Seeing none, Chair.
Members, any questions?
Yeah, I have a question for Hawaiian Homelands.
Vice Chair, are you?
Can you say your name, please?
Oval O'Oriana Leona has the Government Relations Program Specialist for DGJ.
Thank you. Um, I guess my question is, I, I know that this is just increasing the amount to 75%, but is there still like some kind of underwriting that's done to ensure that like the loan to value is like a good, you know, like that there's like able for repayment and it's like a good amount for the loan and it's not just everyone's getting 75% a loan on the, on this?
I'm sorry, can you repeat the question?
I, I'm saying, I'm saying we're increasing the loan limit to 75%, right? To, to finance a single-family home. I'm just trying to understand if there's still like an underwriting procedure that's going to be done to ensure that like the loan can be repaid and, you know, it's a good, it's like a comfortable amount for the, for the landowner as opposed to it just being like a flat 75% for everyone and that there's no consideration to the ability to pay or the, the worthiness of the, the loan amount?
No, it's a flat 75% across the board as it amends Section 215 of the Hawaiian Homes Commission Act.
I see, okay, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Members, any further questions? Seeing none. The next item on the agenda is HB 2571 relating to accessible housing. Uh, this would establish the multi-family housing accessibility modifications grant program to facilitate the installation of accessibility modifications in certain properties and inappropriate money to do so. Vice Chair, are you for the testimony?
Uh, Department of Health with comments. Thank you. Uh, Ann Lopez, Attorney General.
Good morning Chair Eslin and members of the committee. I am Michelle Axala, Deputy Attorney General. We have identified a possible constitutional issue under Article 7, Section 4, which provides in part that no grant of public money shall be made except to standards provided by law. The bill does not include standards which the Department of Health is to distribute the grant funds. We recommend that the bill includes standards and we attach to our testimony sample standards that could be used or amended, um, to fit the legislator's intent for the program. We're happy to answer any questions, thank you.
Thank you. State Council on Developmental Disabilities in support.
Thank you, Daintree Partolos, Executive Minister for the Hawaii State Council on Developmental Disabilities. Um, our council stands in support of, um, accessible homes that promotes aging in place for kapuna and individuals with developmental disabilities to remain in their communities. However, we do understand there may be some logistics with this bill, but we just want to make sure that we understand that we are standing on the premise of building accessible homes and we defer to the Department of Health for any other recommendations. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Uh, and then Daphne Barbie Wooten, individual in support. Anyone else in the audience or on Zoom wishing to testify on this matter, HB 2571? Chair, seeing none.
Members, any questions for the testifiers? Rep Onishi?
Yes, um, thank you, Chair. Uh, Department of Health?
Good morning, Rep Onishi.
Good morning, thank you for being here. Um, I, you know, in, in this bill, there's no indication really as to the amount of need. Do you have any data that provides us, that could provide us with an estimate of how many families out there are in need of funding to help renovate their dwellings, to make it more accessible? Uh, what is the average or estimated amount per these renovations?
So, so with, thank you for the question. With regard to a number on need, I'm sorry, I don't, um, we were, I was just made aware of the grandfathering of the, um, of retrofitting buildings as a result of the introduction of this bill, sponsoring it. But I can work with my colleagues across the executive branch to try to come up with a rough estimate or an order of magnitude. Insofar as the average cost, I think that really depends. Um, I can, I don't have an answer for that either. I would need to work with our colleagues at the Disability Communication Access Board, DCAB. Uh, they are the, uh, state agency tasked with approving ADA Americans with Disabilities Act plans. For example, when you build a new building, you have to have certain accommodations for individuals with disabilities. So by the end of the day, I could, or maybe in the next few hours, I can get a sense of a range. But I think there's, the need is going to be all over the place. Somebody who is wheelchair-bound may need ramps, you know, so, with sufficient length so that the angle isn't prohibitively steep. Others may just need a railing or something a lot less fixed. So I think if this bill moves forward, per AG's, um, recommendations, that we kind of think about the requirements, the stratified, uh, complexity and need, uh, if this conversation continues. But, um, we have been made aware of this, of this being an issue, so, um, we are open to continuing the conversation and I'll work on getting that data for you.
So are there any programs that provide for financial loans to help people, uh, with modifications?
I can only speak for the Department of Health and I am not aware of any within the Department of Health.
So if this is a program that you guys are implementing, would, do you think that financial need should be a factor versus just outright grants? Because it doesn't seem like there is any kind of, you know, uh, I guess indication that there has to be financial need.
Uh, well, our first recommendation is that the department, that the DCAB rather than DOH operate this program, should the legislature authorize it? Because again, they are the subject matter experts. But in principle, I think most people, myself included, would agree that financial need should be a criteria. Uh, we have seen, for example, with the cesspool program, uh, grant program, uh, people can afford to front the money, get the repayment. People who can't get a loan or don't have that, that much money sitting in the bank or do not have adequate credit can't avail themselves because it is a loan repayment program. So those are the kinds of, uh, financial considerations and program design that, um, uh, a, a public policy debate should focus on.
Thank you, Chair.
All right, Vice Chair, are you?
I, I guess just to follow up on that, so as far as the plans are concerned that you're testifying about, does DCAB help the homeowners build the plans or do the plans?
I do not believe so. Uh, I can, I can say with certainty that when, um, buildings, commercial buildings or new developments come up, DCAB approves the plan. So developers are required by law to submit accessibility plans to DCAB and DCAB provides technical assistance, guidance, and ultimately approves those plans.
Yeah, but I mean, it's just to follow up on Representative Onishi's concerns, you are stating that like only individuals who have the money to do like cesspool conversions can get the grants. If they don't even have the money to build the plans to renovate their homes to be accessible, how are they going to do the program?
I see your point, so thank you, yeah. Uh, you know, if you have the wherewithal to hire an architect, uh, or a general contractor just to develop the plans, um, if you, you know, if you can't even get your foot into that door, then the rest of it's not going to happen. So again, I, I would encourage the, um, a public policy conversation about, um, standards including need, um, and various ways that, you know, is it a grant, is it a loan repayment, et cetera, et cetera.
Okay, and then is there any, and I, I guess this would be something that's in the bill, but is there any like, uh, inspection on DOH's part to ensure that the improvements are made or like how would you get, would you get, I'm assuming you're going to get the money and then you do the repairs, but do you go out and check, make sure it's compliant? Or?
And so that's, I think, part of the program design that the AG was getting at. Um, for example, I would use the cesspool, it's loan repayment, so you have to show us the invoice from the contractor, not here's $25,000 pinky promise that you're going to build a cesspool. So you have to come back with the documentation. Um, and again, those standards, those quality, those assurances should be part of a public policy debate should this move forward.
Thank you, thank you, Chair.
Members, any further questions? All right, seeing none, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, next item on the agenda is HB 1631 relating to housing. This requires the School Facilities Authority to work with the Department of Education to prioritize projects for the construction of educator workforce housing that will house teachers and other staff of the department. Uh, Vice Chair, for the testimony.
Allison Kunishige, School Facilities Authority in support.
Good morning Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. Uh, the School Facilities Authority stands in support of this bill. SFA is focusing on, among other things, educator workforce housing, and this bill would require the collaboration between DOE and SFA. Uh, SFA has recently released an RFP for a construction of educator workforce housing on the Mililani High School campus. In order to successfully construct projects like these, as well as constructing other projects on school campuses, collaboration between DOE and SFA is essential. So SFA supports this bill and I am available for any questions.
Thank you. Um, sorry, I'm going to mess up your name again, but Daintree Bartodos?
Standby, thank you.
Was that close?
Yes.
Okay, good, 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 thank you. Uh, Osetui, HSTA in support. Douglas Adams, Department of Research and Development, County of Hawaii in support. Susan Kuntz, County of Hawaii, Office of Housing and Community Development with comments on Zoom, nope. Joshua Wish, Holamua Collaborative, I thought I saw him, in support.
Uh, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee, um, I'm with Holamua Collaborative, but we basically do is try to find ways to help keep all local working families in Hawaii by making sure they can afford to stay. And that's one of the reasons that we are supporting this bill is that it's a, a way to try to make sure that we're recruiting and retaining educators and finding ways for them to actually afford to be in this profession by in part helping to bring the housing, um, to the jobs. Um, and so by building on the work that SFA has been doing, and as we are working on this, we are working with SFA to help identify some of the things that they thought, um, would help move these things along. And as you can see from some of the testimony, we worked with a lot of other partners from different sectors, um, to try to help build this out. And that's where these recommendations you're seeing in terms of collaboration with DOE on prioritizing projects, um, having those specific metrics coming from SFA on what actions they're going to take over the next couple of years. And then also taking a look at things like Act 307 and seeing which lands are supposed to be getting transferred, um, to DOE, what the status of that is, and then for the ones that haven't been prioritizing that. So we think this will go, uh, a long way towards, uh, helping the work that's already been getting done by SFA and others, and thank you very much for considering it, we'll help you support it. I'm here for any questions.
Thank you, Josh. Sterling Higa, Housing Hawaii's Future on Zoom? Okay, nope. Uh, Ed Schultz, Hawaiian Host Group in support. Matt Stevens, Hawaii Workforce Funders Collaborative in support. Julie Yunker, Hawaii Gas in support. Michael Pitsich in support. Brandon Karusu in support. Chris Coffield in support. Malia Suchia in support. Any other individuals wishing to testify on this matter in person or on Zoom, HB 1631? Chair.
All right, seeing none, members, any questions? Vice Chair, are you?
Just, just for SFA really quickly. Morning, I'm, I'm just a little bit confused with the bill. I, I fully support it, I'm just trying to understand, you just said you had an RFP that came out?
Yes.
So why do we need the bill for you to collaborate with the department to do teacher housing?
Well, it's not only for Mililani, we did have the cooperation of the school principal, but we do need the wider collaboration beyond just school principals. And then also, um, to expand it beyond a single campus. You know, it's very helpful that if there is a mandate within statute that says we do have to collaborate, then it's very helpful. It's, we have, we have something to point to and say that this is why we're here at your doorstep, asking for land on your school campus to, uh, build teacher housing.
So is what you're telling me, you're going to DOE and DOE is saying, no, I don't have to help you?
No, not, that's not what I'm saying. You know, they have other priorities and their priority is education. And so we understand that. But we also are trying to help on the teacher workforce housing standpoint, and so they have another focus. And so if we can point to something and say, this is why we're here, and we're not here just to try to distract you from what your core mission is, we're here specifically to fulfill this statutory mandate and to build this housing.
So who, who at DOE do you work with to, to try to get this through, to try to get these projects done?
So it, right now, it kind of depends, right? Sometimes we, it kind of depends on what we're doing and what we're working on and what stage of a project that we're on, because.
I, I just want to know who at DOE is saying, sorry, I don't have the time to help you, or teacher housing is not my priority, education is, and so you need this statute, and I don't even think it's strong enough for what you're saying. All it says is the authority shall work with the department to prioritize. That's not saying the department even needs to work with you at all, so.
It, it's not individuals. I think it's just more like changing a mindset, right? From focusing, from saying that, okay, this is something that schools and principals can also talk to SFA about and that the, the department as a whole can shift to in some way, um, start those conversations with SFA. Because it's, it's a new conversation, right? About doing this. And so it's kind of shifting that mindset and changing the paradigm of what we're looking at.
Okay, thank you, Chair.
Members, any further questions? Rep Onishi? Rep. Onishi.
This last conversation kind of bothers me also, The School Facilities Authority was set up a while ago, and it was really set up to look at the development of D O E property for different types of use, including housing. I don't understand what you're saying is that, I mean, what I'm getting from you and what you're saying is the D O E is not cooperative.
That's not what I'm trying to say, and I do apologize if that's the message that is coming across from me. As far as teacher housing, that was something that was more recently added to S F A's authority and focus. So it was actually the last legislative session, teacher housing was added to S F A's plate as well as funding. So it is a more recent development, and that's why we're still kind of trying to have those conversations and understandings.
Right, but housing in general was originally one of the development goals, right, for the, for the authority.
I believe it was originally focused on school facilities, and so like new schools, preschools, I think was the original intent, but I can definitely get back to you as far as the timing and my understanding of it.
Okay, well, my understanding was we had these vacant school lands or underutilized school lands, and the D O E should look at how to help generate revenue or address some of our situations like housing on their lands and make it more useful. But I also have, okay, so I have another question is, are you opposed to adding other counties in this bill? Because it's very specific and excludes Hawaii County and the city and county of Honolulu.
No, I would not be opposed to something like that. I think it would be good to have conversations, though, with our county level partners and make sure we're all on the same page.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Chair.
Vice Chair, are you?
I'm sorry, now I have a few more questions. When was S F A started?
So I believe it was originally started in twenty twenty, so that's when the board was formed. But it didn't actually have any staffing until twenty twenty-two was like the appointment of the executive director. And then after that, I think in twenty twenty-three, it got like three other positions, so, and then last session, we got an additional eight positions. So it's sort of slowly been...
So since we've created S F A, you've done one R F P, the one we're talking about right now for teacher housing?
Well, teacher housing we just got last year, so between the end of...
That's all you've done, though, that one, that one R F P that you were just discussing.
And we're also developing, we're looking at developing one for Maui as well, but with everything that's going on there, we're kind of talking about timing and sensitivities and things like that. That's also in addition to all of the pre-kindergarten work that has been happening.
Wait, so you guys are doing pre-K, not the L G? L G's not doing pre-K?
So we're supporting the L G's office in the renovation and construction of preschool classrooms, so we...
When you say supporting, what does supporting mean?
Doing the construction, doing the actual construction and renovation. That's through S F A.
You guys are going out and bidding the projects and then doing the construction of the preschools?
Correct.
Okay, okay, thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Rep. Keela has a question.
Thank you, Chair. I have a question. So, B N F, right, they line item vetoed the cash for S F A teacher housing, then converted it to bond funding, right?
That is what's on the table this session, correct?
Wait, so it's not approved yet?
That's part of the budget is to change the nature of those funds from cash to geo bonds.
So but as of right now, then the cash can technically be utilized, because it's going forward for conversion?
Yeah.
Okay. I have a question, because I think right now in the line item, it only talks about Nanakuli, Waipahu, and Mililani. Is it the intent to implement the same process and procedure of one style for every three schools, the way you focused it pre-K?
Oh, for the teacher housing, you mean? No, that's, it's a different kind of animal, right? And then I think the, the money is not only necessarily for those three areas, but it's also for counties across the state. And so it, it would be very difficult to kind of have a cookie cutter project that would be suitable for every single location, because even when you're looking at school campuses, the kind of land that's available, the amount of land that's available, that's going to vary greatly from place to place, as well as the nature of the community. You don't want to build something that's going to be in conflict with the nature of the community.
But to that point, right, I mean, we want to try to keep costs down, so to some duplication would help keep that going, right?
It's true, but at the same time, we, we aren't necessarily going to have the same kind of land and the same kind of elevations, all of those things will differ. And we're trying to do it through public-private partnerships with developers who can bring their ideas, right? We are going to definitely keep, try to keep the cost down by finding partners to work with us and have them bring their ideas for how to develop these lands.
Okay, maybe we should talk offline.
Yes.
Thank you, Chair.
Members, any further questions?
Chair, I have a follow up. So in this bill, the purpose, you know, it talks about the School Facilities Authority, work with the Department of Education to prioritize projects, require the School Facilities Authority to include in its annual report to the legislature actions taken over the, within the next year, three years, five years, and then it says require the Department of Education to collaborate. And I don't see the Department of Education here, so are you representing the Department of Education?
No, I am not.
So, this third purpose, is this something you guys would take on to work with the state departments and the counties to try to designate land for transfer to the department?
That's something that the Department of Education would be working with, but we would assist them in those efforts to help with transfer.
Okay, but the department is not here to say that they're willing to take this on.
I can't speak on their behalf, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Chair.
All right, members, further questions? Actually, I have a question for Josh Wish.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for your testimony. Yeah, Josh, I know Holamua was instrumental in helping develop the bill and collaborate with S F A on the drafting, and given the exclusion of Maui County and Kauai County, I mean, sorry, given the exclusion of Hawaii County and City County of Honolulu, could you elaborate on the rationale for that?
Yeah, so my, my memory of that, and I can go back and double check for everyone, is that Act three oh seven, which is what that part is referencing, I think actually specifically named those counties in D L N R. And I think it actually didn't name Hawaii County. So that's, it's basically tracking what's in Act three oh seven, but what I will commit to do is go back, double check, make sure we're right about that. And regardless of whether we are, I think everyone would probably consider it a friendly amendment if those got added in, but that's why those specific counties are listed that way.
Okay, and so the collaboration for the construction of housing, though, is statewide?
Yes, yes, yeah, that's definitely the intent. That's the only reason that those specific counties were called out as it tracks the statute, as I currently understand it.
Gotcha, all right, thank you very much.
Okay, thanks a lot.
Members, further questions?
Can I get a follow up? So, in the purpose of this bill, so in the third purpose, why was it Department of Education and not the School Facilities Authority?
So in, in that act, it talks about the lands that are supposed to be transferred to D O E, and so that's, that's why it was drafted that way, is because the act talks about the lands being transferred to the Department of Education. As Allison was saying, I expected S F A and D O E would work pretty closely on that together. I've also had some conversations with folks at D O E, and I think some of that work may actually be underway. And if that's something that they're already doing, then that's, that's great, I think they might already be working on some of it.
Okay, thank you, Chair.
Thanks, Rep. Thank you, Josh, further questions?
All right.
Seeing none.
Okay, thanks a lot.
Thank you, Josh. All right, the next item on our agenda, H P eighteen thirty-eight relating to zoning, allows counties to enact a zoning ordinance to phase out or amortize non-conforming, single-family transientification rental units over a reasonable period of time. Vice Chair, are you for the vote, I mean, for the testimony?
Okay, let's start with Addison Bulosan, Kauai County Council, in support, person on Zoom, okay. Kiani Rollins Fernandez, County of Maui, in support, on Zoom. Kipe Kai Loa...
Asha Zer.
Oh. Hello.
Aloha.
Morning.
Aloha, Chair, Eves Lynn, Vice Chair, I U, and Honorable Committee members. Mahalo for this opportunity to testify in strong support of H P eighteen thirty-eight. I'm Maui County Council member, Kiani Rollins Fernandez, and I wanted to quickly take this time to also extend a big mahalo to you, Chair Eves Lynn, for co-chairing the Lahaina Wildfire Interim Working Group on Shelter, which developed and introduced this legislation. As acknowledged in six A of the Shelter Working Group's summary of findings, the primary challenge to securing permanent housing for displaced families is the lack of available housing stock. It recognized that Maui and Kauai have lost existing housing stock, likely due to out-of-state owners leaving units vacant and converting housing stock to vacation rentals. The impact of short-term rentals is most significant on Kauai and Maui, with fifteen percent of the housing stock consisting of vacation rentals and many of the units highly concentrated in certain towns, including Lahaina. There are over twenty-two hundred units in Lahaina currently used as transientification rental units in the apartment zone district alone, many of which were once workforce and long-term housing units. This bill will help our county return many of these units back to our full-time residents. In light of the federal court ruling in Hawaii Legal Short-Term Rental Alliance v. City and County of Honolulu last month, the following are two proposed amendments, I believe, that will better clarify the legislature's intention regarding T D Rs. One, on page six, line sixteen, add each county has the authority to define transient vacation rental units in their zoning code. And two, on page six, line twenty, add non-conforming transient vacation rental units will not be considered residential use as provided in this section. It is critical to, critical to our county that the legislature affirm that it does not recognize transient vacation rentals as residential use, it is commercial use. Mahalo for the opportunity to testify in strong support of H P eighteen thirty-eight. Mahalo.
Thank you very much. Kipe Kai Loa in support. Lahaina Strong in support, on Zoom. Sterling Higa, Housing Hawaii's Future in support, on Zoom. Hawaii Financial Services LLC in support. Grassroots Institute, Ted, are you here? Nope. Okay, Hawaii Realtors.
Hello. Hi.
Morning.
Good morning, Chair and Vice Chair and Committee. My name's Cassandra Shriver, I am the Government Affairs Committee Chair, and we are standing on our testimony in opposition and just offer that housing of all types and every need is needed for our residents of Hawaii, and that includes rentals that are of thirty days or greater. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's see, Alicia Humiston. That was in opposition. Alex April, Airbnb with comments. Good morning.
Mahalo for the opportunity to comment on H P eighteen thirty-eight related to county zoning. So we've worked closely with the state of Hawaii and local governments in Honolulu, Kauai, Big Island, and Maui to develop short-term rental policies that allow for home sharing to continue to support the state's tourism industry while providing accommodations for visitors, including transient workers, students, and residents displaced by natural disasters. Given the historical role short-term rentals have played in supporting the state's visitor economy, we write to express our concerns on H P eighteen thirty-eight, including the following. Number one, the impact on state revenue. According to the Hawaii Tourism Authority, the short-term rental industry generated one hundred and thirty-two point six million in T A T revenue alone in twenty eighteen. In twenty twenty-two, Airbnb generated approximately seventy-seven million in G E T and T E T to the state of Hawaii. Total G E T and T A T revenue is substantially higher when factoring host revenue, tax revenue from other platforms and with other independent hosts. If passed, H P eighteen thirty, H P eighteen thirty-eight would significantly reduce the state's ability to make ends meet under the current budget. Additionally, Airbnb is absolutely willing to partner with counties. We have M O Us with Honolulu, Maui, and Kauai to support their enforcement of the short-term, short-term rental rules. For example, pursuant of our M O A, Kauai has consistently worked with us on takedown requests. On Maui, we removed more than thirteen hundred listings that did not, that did not comply with our M O U that we signed in February of twenty twenty-two. H P eighteen thirty-eight creates uncertainty, and that uncertainty makes it really difficult for enforcement to occur effectively. It does not reflect the progress of the short-term rental policies at the local level and does not take into account the hard work and collaboration of notice and takedown tools, the important tools of the M O Us, and the multi-year discussion on short-term rental policies. Additionally, I want to speak about the days after the wildfires in Maui last August. Airbnb and Airbnb dot org worked closely with the Governor's Office and the Department of Human Services to provide temporary housing for displaced residents. In total, we impact, we connected over twenty-two hundred displaced residents and are still working with them on an ongoing basis for the long-term housing. We remain committed, working with you and working with our hosts to preserve the significant benefits that short-term rentals bring. I appreciate your willingness to hear my comments, and I'll be around for any questions you may have. Mahalo.
Thank you. David Louie, K S G, in opposition.
Good morning, Chair Eves Lynn, Vice Chair, I U, members. I know some of you, but some of you I don't know. I served as the former Attorney General a number of years ago, and my, Airbnb has come to me essentially for legal advice on this, and I appreciate, and there's a lot of people who signed on to this bill, so I appreciate the popularity of wanting to try and do something about this, but this bill is not the way to do it. This bill raises and violates important constitutional provisions, and it's, it's a real problem. It seems innocuous, but there's some fundamental constitutional provisions. One, you can't take from people and you can't legislate out of existence what are lawful uses right now. In other words, you don't get to retroactively go back and say, hey, I've decided you can't do what you've been doing on your property. That's not allowed, and it's not allowed by this ordinance, which they want to change, but it's also not allowed by the Constitution, by the Fifth Amendment of the Hawaii Constitution and the Fifth Amendment of the federal Constitution. So that's, that's the most important thing, and I'm going to explain very briefly on that. And then the second one is, is that if you're going to pass laws, the legislature under the Constitution has to pass laws that are of general application. You don't get to spot legislate and say, well, you don't get to, you people don't get to do some things, but I'm going to allow that for other people. So there's important constitutional provisions here, and the legislature has an obligation to, you know, pass laws that are constitutional. The problem here is, is that short-term rentals are not a resort use, and short-term rent, they are recognized by courts longstanding, many years, as a residential use, whether it's a one day or thirty days or a year, it's still a residential use because people are living there. So you can't just define things out of existence. Forty-six dash four is a codification of the constitutional provisions, and, but the constitutional provisions remain. The counties want to change this statute, but that doesn't change the Constitution, and it's really futile. So I guess my point there is, is that short-term rentals have been recognized as an accepted use, and recently, you know, Judge Watson, Derek Watson, U S District Court Judge, ruled that, that prior attempts to legislate by the counties were unconstitutional and violated both forty-six dash four as well as the Fifth Amendments of the U S Constitution and the Hawaii Constitution. So it's all, the counties want to chip away at that and, and take away forty-six dash four, but it really doesn't matter. So to sum up, really, you've, you know, I appreciate the concern that people have for housing, but you can't do it this way. This is going to lead to litigation, it's going to be unconstitutional. It's going to be unconstitutional, and I think that's just wrong. So anyway, thank you for listening to me. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Damian Waikoloa, Hawaii MB. Amy Ramos, Kihei Oasis Vacation Rental, Maui, in opposition. Okay, everyone, please bear with me, but there are a lot of other people that submitted testimony. Is there anyone who submitted testimony in person wishing to testify on this matter? How about on Zoom? Anyone who submitted testimony on Zoom wishing to testify?
Yeah. Leonard Nakua.
Go ahead.
Yes, how are you guys doing, bro? Leonard Nakua, oh, everyone know me, Junior Nakua from Lahaina. You know, we say hanging out at Kanapali, fishing for housing at Kanapali, for this reason, yeah? Because of these things. Even the governor was saying that it can happen in Kauai, so we can make this bugger happen in Lahaina, yeah? Well, our biggest thing is, you know, since the guy before me is talking about residential, bro, we take licking from these SDRs in our residentials. You know, we like kick back like that, but no, we get people to say one day, three day, four day, five day, and they party. This is not our vacation. This is not our Disneyland. This is our house, but these guys treat them like that. So we tired of this thing, okay? We getting pushed around. Lahaina needs to be heard. Get Kanapali, get all those bloody hotels over there. Get Kanapali Hillside, get all them guys all over there, all the rich buggers. Yeah, go let them have their SDRs over there, but keep them out of our neighborhoods. And yeah, we got to stop this, period. But we need to stop this now so displaced Lahaina people get placed for stay for long term. And that's the bottom line, kind of, because we say, hey, people getting kicked out left, right, up, down, crack, right, whatever, we getting cracks. Okay, you should hear the stories. You should hear the passion, yeah? Yeah, I'm not scared, I come talk. There plenty of people who scared talk because they're going to lose their benefits, yeah, from the FEMA, from the Red Cross, and all that kind of stuff, so they scared talk. But these guys not scared, okay? I'm going to come back, I wish I was over there in present, okay? Because I could have been there for that meeting and the Senate meeting, but I had to take care of my mother. But I'm going to come over there pretty soon, gang. Love you guys, bro. Take you guys for what you guys do. Stay strong, Lahaina strong, yes, sir. Have a good one.
Thank you, Mr. Nakua. Joshua Montgomery, I think I saw you next. Are you available? Go ahead.
Yes, absolutely.
In opposition.
Hello, my name's Joshua Montgomery, and I'm a coffee farmer and a vacation rental operator here on the Big Island, where more than 7,000 families on our island depend on the income from vacation rentals in order to pay their own mortgage. This industry is not a zero-sum game. It's not that one person owns a home and runs it as a vacation rental, and so someone else can't have that home, right? That home generates income and generates revenue that provides employment and funding for the owners to pay for their own housing. If the counties are allowed to phase out that use, right, and continue to subscribe to the false narrative that somehow our industry is taking housing off of the market, then we run the risk of them taking our home and putting our employees out of business. I keep hearing that 50% of the vacation rentals are owned by out-of-state interests, and what that discounts is nearly 100% of the hotels are owned by out-of-state interests. And those hotels push down local wages in order to export their profits to the mainland. It's colonial tourism. The colonials get all of the benefits, and we pay all of the costs of the tourism and the housing. This industry is very important to locals who in our industry make nearly $40 an hour here on the Big Island as housekeepers, of which there are 600 that depend on this income. I'm opposed to this bill because it allows the counties to retroactively change the rules. As we've had this debate about our industry across the islands, one of the things that the counties have guaranteed is that if you're already doing it, you'll be allowed to continue doing it, and that's tamped down on opposition to these bills. I think that if the public had known that the state planned to retroactively take away their rights to operate their businesses, we'd have had a much louder conversation about the regulatory taking action that a lot of this legislation has enabled. This creates a slippery slope, and I think you should think very carefully about it. Right now, vacation rental owners are the targets, but in the future, it might be building height. You know, you got a nonconforming use permit in order to add another story onto your home? Well, the county decides they don't like that, they take it away and force you to tear it down. The same for a gazebo in your backyard, or a swimming pool, or a workshop on the side of your house that you can earn money as a woodworker. I think that it's very important that the rules remain the rules and that folks that are operating legally and within the law be continued to allow to do so, right, without the counties being given the power to retroactively remove those uses. Thank you, I appreciate the time.
Thank you, Mr. Montgomery.
Hey, aloha. My name is David. In the chat, it said I could go next. David Chizuma, testifying as an individual. So aloha, Chair, Vice Chair, Committee Members. I want to start off by acknowledging, I think that this bill calls out short-term rentals within the residential areas, and so I want to focus in on that. With that, each county in Hawaii is unique and has its own set of challenges and needs, and I think each county would know best on how to address those concerns for the betterment of the community. And two, while this is beneficial and has been talked about, just, I mean, specifically for the victims of the Lahaina wildfire, I do think for the people of Hawaii, it could be critical in rebuilding our communities and improving the health of our people and our well-being of our neighborhoods as houses are returned to its intended use as residential housing. I grew up in Kanaue, and all the homes on my road were all long-time residents, and what happens there is we form relationships, friendships, we learn to trust each other. You know, when we're out as kids, like, we knew whose kids to watch out for, and when they got hurt, we all took care of each other. We trusted everybody and raised everybody just like a family. All the neighbors are pretty much considered a family, and that's the Hawaii that some of us remember. And when we talk about short-term rentals, we talk about, in residential areas specifically, we remove that possibility of these long-term relationships, this family-oriented living, and, you know, we're left with communities that aren't as strong, where there isn't bonds, and we don't take care of each other, we don't look out for each other's homes. And that's the Hawaii that I grew up in, and I think this bill could help us get us back there, having neighborhoods filled again with families and not short-term rentals, and rebuilding our communities and our social systems. That's all I have. Mahalo for your time.
Thank you. Chris, are you next? Chris Adair?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, go ahead, Chris.
I appreciate the opportunity to testify. Aloha. I'm writing to express my deep concerns regarding House Bill 1838, a proposal which, if passed, could significantly impact homeowners like myself in Hawaii. My name is Chris Adair, and I'm a proud resident of the Big Island. The essence of my concern revolves around the provisions in this bill that allow the counties to retroactively remove the nonconforming use protections. These protections are not just abstract legal terms for my family, they're the foundation of our livelihood and the security of our home. For years, my family has been able to provide accommodations to visitors in Hawaii. This activity is not only a source of income for us, but a way that we share our aloha spirit to those who come to experience our island and its unique culture and beauty. The income generated from this venture is vital for us. It helps us to pay for housing and meet our financial obligations. Without this income, we would face significant financial challenges, potentially jeopardizing our ability to maintain our home. The retroactive removal of nonconforming use protections poses a direct threat to the stability. Homeowners like myself have made decisions based on the existence of rules and protections. We've invested time, effort, and resources under the assurance that our rights to use our property will be respected. The retroactive nature of the bill undermines this trust and creates an environment of uncertainty and instability. Our homes are more than just the physical structures, they're places of safety and comfort and memories. The ability to rely on the consistent and fair rules from our county is essential. We, as homeowners, deserve to feel secure in our investments and decisions. Changing these rules retroactively is not just a matter of a legal technicality, it affects real people and the very essence of what makes our communities stable and thriving. While we understand the need for regulations and the importance of planning for the future of our beautiful state, we want to urge you to consider the profound impact that this could have on families like mine. We seek a balance that will allow us to maintain our livelihoods while contributing positively to our communities. I respectfully request that you consider the provisions in 1838, particularly having to do with the retroactive removal of nonconforming use protections. Please let us work together to find a solution that protects the interest of all stakeholders in Hawaii. Mahalo.
Thank you. Rachel Jax, are you next?
All right.
Go ahead.
Hello, everyone. My name is Rachel J. Cox. I'm speaking on behalf of the 600-some housekeepers here on the Big Island. I think our point of view on this type of bill is not really heard very often, and I would like to bring it to the forefront. So this bill, which would retroactively retract short-term vacation rental allowances for private owners, I do believe is an overreach of government into people's private lives. And honestly, it would totally decimate the housekeepers on the Big Island who want to work in short-term vacation rentals overworking on occupied houses. There is reasons, and each housekeeper has their own individual reasons, but if we were pushed out into working only in resort zones here on the Big Island for me, that means over a 30-mile commute each way each day, and for less than half of what I currently make as an individual. And most of us are individually employed, some of us are underneath the banner of whoever does choose to use our services, and they pay, you know, our taxes in 1099 versus... 10... or, sorry, off track. Basically, what I want to say is that it devalues our labor if we have to go in to work for $15 an hour for a hotel. It doesn't help us provide for our families or come into housing when the average salary on the Big Island is still between $17 and $20 an hour. That doesn't cover my gas, much less having to rent or trying to buy my own home. And most of the properties that you're looking at retracting, the rights to are multimillion-dollar properties, like, who on the Big Island is going to be able to afford that on their own? Like, it's not easy, and I know for a fact that I will lose my employment and I'll be forced to look into other options, which right now, I don't see as a real big possibility. So thank you so much. Like, I'm very passionate about this, so I am kind of like scattered, but thank you for hearing me speak.
Thank you. I don't see anyone else. Is there anyone else on Zoom wishing to testify?
Yes, I would. I would like to testify.
Sorry, go ahead. What is your name? Sherilyn?
Sherilyn Fu.
Okay, go ahead.
Hi there. Thank you so much for hearing me. I'm one of the original nuke holders back in the day, and I strongly oppose Bill 1838. You know, I have been so tired of fighting for decades to keep my family, business, and livelihood going. You know, my late brother Mark Fu and my parents started this concept, this business, back in the, you know, 80s, and now it's just me and my kids. I mean, my son has given up other career paths to come home and help me with the business, hoping to pass this on to his future children and things. And I just wanted to say that I can only speak about the Oahu, and do you know that there are only 114 units, not TMKs, units, meaning if it's a duplex, you have to pay for two certificates, on the entire island of Oahu? 114 zoned in residentially zoned areas. And, you know, I just don't, and 80% of them are residents in Kipuna. I'm a Kipuna, and we've been excluded from the housing market for over 30 years. I've been paying taxes, insurances, fees. I was closed for eight months because I'm legal, I live up to the rules. During COVID, I was shut for eight months. I shut myself because I was supposed to. Now, I really, really think that, you know, this authority that you're going to give the counties is going to be used against us legal people, because they've tried to sunset me before when they didn't have the authority, and guess what? Now you're going to give me the authority, give them the authority. Soon is this going to benefit? 114 units on the entire island of Oahu that have never been up for housing are going to be taken away, you're going to take away my livelihood, and it's because our county cannot enforce the rules that are on the books already with about illegal vacation rentals. There are thousands of illegal vacation rentals and 114 of us on Oahu in residentially zoned areas. I don't understand who this is supposed to benefit. You know, I'm going to take away my certificates, take away my family's livelihood, my small what's left of my family, but I just don't understand who this is supposed to benefit. When you give them this kind of authority, they will use it to close legal people in lieu of, you know, taking care of the illegal ones that are already on the books. And so I really, really do not understand the point of this, to give away, give the authority to the counties who are overwhelmed already, who cannot enforce the laws on the books right now, and give them the easy way out, I'm sorry to say, to, well, they know who the legal people are, they don't know who the illegal people are.
Ms. Fu, can you wrap up your testimony, please?
Okay. Yes, that's my testimony. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. I think I see Kai... What was her last name? Nishiki? You want to testify?
Hi, good morning. Hi, good morning, Kai Nishiki, offering testimony on HB 1838. Wow, I have so much to say here. The counties absolutely should have the authority to decide what is going on. They are the most intimately involved in decisions that affect our everyday lives, and it has been so offensive to sit here and listen to all of these people talk about commodifying homes. In the word residential area, you know, that's where people reside and live, that it is not supposed to be a business. Go do business in business areas. Homes are to provide a place for our families to live. This has been, there has been a direct impact to the affordability of homes because our housing market has been commodified by businesses. And Airbnb and these lawyers who are coming on here and saying like how great this industry is, this is why we don't have, I'm living in Maui. There are thousands of people who can't find housing, and it is directly related to our neighborhoods being taken over by short-term rentals for vacation use. If that was, if we didn't have a housing issue then related to short-term rentals and Airbnbs, then why has the governor, and why has the mayor, and why is everybody threatening to do a short-term rental moratorium, which should have happened? And we are losing every single day. Our local families are moving away because our residential neighborhoods have been taken over by short-term rentals and vacation rentals. This industry is toxic, absolutely toxic, and our counties must be given this authority. We have a deep, we have deep concerns regarding the proliferation of short-term rentals in our communities. They have had significant downsides for housing options for our local workforce. Our communities thrive on the contribution of local workers, county and state government workers, teachers, healthcare workers, emergency responders... workers, teachers, healthcare workers, emergency responders. These are the people that form the backbone of our society. And the increasing number of short-term rentals has created a housing crisis for these vital members of our community. We have hundreds of shortages of people who want to serve our community, not serve tourists.
Kai, can I have you wrap it up, please?
Yes. I would like to support Councilmember Keanu Rollins Fernandez amendments to the legislation and fully support this HB 1838.
Thank you. Okay, is there anyone else on Zoom wishing to testify on this matter?
Yes, this is Karen O'Mahony. I registered yesterday.
Okay, go ahead, Karen.
I apologize for having my video off. I can't figure out how to make a background, and I'm not at a place I can have my video on. Thank you for this opportunity, and I certainly appreciate the view that was just stated. However, I opposed HB 1838. While it would be convenient if we could cancel all vacation rentals and somehow the housing market would then suddenly be affordable, that's not what would happen, and that's not why we're having the housing crisis that we're having, and this is not a solution. This is simply taking property rights away from people who do live here, who have figured out a way to live in this, in this high cost of living by renting part of their home out and the people that have had permits for 30 years. I mean, all of the sudden, we're going to punish them. And the previous testifier was asking who would benefit, and the person, the place that benefits is the hotels. They're the ones that don't want to have anywhere else for anyone to stay. And unfortunately, if the people that do have short-term rentals are phased out and forced to sell, those homes aren't going to go to the local people. They're just going to go to someone from the mainland who can afford our hideous pricing, our housing prices. The prices aren't just going to drop. Other people who have that kind of money are just going to come in and buy it. So this is simply another damage to citizens who do live here and who have found a way to afford our high cost of living. And we can't, we can't keep taking property rights away just to benefit the hotels, and it is not something that's going to solve our housing problem. We need to actually take a look at the housing problem. We need to take a look at the cost of living here. The Jones Act thing that makes the livestock feed three times more expensive to ship from California to Hawaii instead of from California to Japan, I mean, there's a huge cost that we shouldn't have to pay, that we could do something about. But forcing people to sell their homes and sell them to rich people on the mainland is not going to solve our housing problem. So I appreciate this is a serious problem, but Bill HB 1838 is not going to solve it. It's just going to further hurt Hawaii residents. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen, for your testimony. Martha, I see you're next. Martha, can you hear me? Can you say your name? Is that not Martha? Martha, we can't hear you. Okay, well, Martha, we'll come back to you. Is there anyone else on Zoom wishing to testify on this matter?
All right, seeing none, members, questions? And I just want to note, it is 11:20 right now, so we are going to have to get through this relatively fast. But members, some questions for any of the testifiers?
I have some questions. Vice Chair, I U.
For David, I have some questions for you. So, so it's... are you saying that simply giving the counties authority to do something makes this bill unconstitutional?
Giving, well...
Whether they exercise that power or not, just giving the authority, does that make this bill unconstitutional?
I don't think so.
Okay.
But I think that the point is, is that taking away this protection in the zoning law, which says the counties are prohibited from doing this, is taking away a statutory protection which is consistent with the constitutional protections. And I misspoke earlier, the Hawaii Constitution takings provision, this is not the Fifth Amendment, it's in a different section. So the bill itself, and the point of my testimony was, is that there are constitutional protections that prohibit the counties from taking, retroactively, taking away lawful uses or prohibiting lawful uses.
So, sorry, hypothetical, but if there was, like, a brothel that was previously a lawful use and the counties wanted to phase out that use, you're saying that would be unconstitutional?
Well, I'm not sure about your example because I don't think brothels have ever been a legal use in here.
Okay.
So, but...
Okay, so if there's, like, a landfill somewhere and the counties don't want it to be used as a landfill anymore and they phase out that use, you're saying that that's unconstitutional?
If, under certain circumstances, it could be. But in general, landfills, again, are different. It's a different kind of a use because generally, landfills here are maintained by the county. So that's, it's a different thing. But what we're talking about is a lawful use, and as long as you've had a lawful permitted use, even if it's nonconforming, even if it's slightly different from the normal usage, if it's been allowed, there are protections for it. And you can't come in and say you can't do it. That's the prohibitions under the Constitution, both the Hawaii State and the federal Constitution, as well as 46-4. So I guess my point there is that there are constitutional implications. If you got rid of 46-4, that in and of itself is not, I would agree, not unconstitutional to get rid of it. But going the next step, if the counties then try and legislate on this and eliminate these uses, that would be unconstitutional.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
From the Attorney General's office, sorry?
I have a quick follow-up.
Okay, go ahead.
So, just a quick follow-up. So, in the Hillstra case, Judge Watson did say that the city may phase out a nonconforming use in phase-out districts, e.g., business, industrial, or non-resort apartment zone Given that they do have this authority, or that Judge Watson says that the counties may do that, do you disagree with that interpretation? Are you saying that no phase-out under the Constitution would be allowed?
I'm not disagreeing with Judge Watson's commentary there, but what he did say was is that phasing it out in residential uses is unconstitutional. That's what this bill is attempting to do. That's what the counties are seeking, is to declare... I mean, their bill, the bill itself declares that short-term rentals are resort uses, not residential, but that's not true. Nobody's ever said that, and the courts have said the total opposite. So, yes, if it was in a business, I mean, Judge Watson is, I believe, correct on that. This goes beyond what Judge Watson is saying.
Okay. And, thank you.
Okay.
Chair, just...
Oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
Rep. Onishi.
Yes, Representative Onishi.
So, as I read 46-4, and this just previous discussion, so the law does allow for counties to eliminate nonconforming uses specifically in commercial, industrial, resort, and apartment zone areas only. Is that correct?
No, I thought it... I'm sorry, and I don't have it in front of me here, but I thought it talked about non... dealing with residential uses.
No, no, no. What I'm saying is that in 46-4, the law allows for the counties to eliminate nonconforming uses in commercial, industrial, resort, and apartment zone areas only.
Yes.
What this amendment does is it includes all zones.
Yes.
Right?
Yes.
And vacation rentals.
In residential areas, yes.
Well, it says all zones.
Yes.
Okay, so that's what, I mean, you're talking about, is that the current law allows for, if I have a vacation rental in a commercial area, it does allow for that use to be eliminated because this law allows for nonconforming use.
Under 46-4, I think that would be correct. Whether or not it would still implicate a constitutional taking that violates the, either the Hawaii Constitution or the federal Constitution because it was a permitted nonconforming use is another question. But I agree with you that under 46-...
And there's a difference, right?
Yes.
Between permitted and non-permitted.
Right.
Yes. So if it's permitted by the county, the county agreed to allow you to use that property
Right.
for that purpose, then it may violate the Constitution.
If they then come in later on and try and take it away.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
And that's, and that's the whole point, is that the counties have allowed all of these things to occur. People have, as they've testified, they've done things in reliance upon that, they've done it for many years, and now the counties want to say, I want to wipe all that out. So that's a problem.
Well, I think many of us agree, many of them are not permitted. The county did not enforce existing laws.
I'm not arguing with you there. But if they were permitted, like in Honolulu, a number of them were permitted, they were expressly permitted, that's a problem. Nobody, and least of all me, is trying to say that the counties are prohibited from enforcing the laws that exist against illegal short-term rentals.
I guess just one quick follow-up on that. So, and I think maybe part of what Rep. Onishi is alluding to also is that many of the nonconforming use certificates were granted because of, there was a lack of prohibition against short-term renting. I believe lots of them were proliferating without clarity via the zoning ordinance in whether it was allowed or not. The counties then granted nonconforming use certificates to them while clarifying that these uses were not allowed. So even in a case like that, where it was not specifically allowed, but it was due to, you know, vague land use ordinance, do you think it would still be unconstitutional for over a reasonable period of time to revoke those uses?
Yes. Yes, because they allowed it. I mean, the county has to act consistently, and when they allow it and they gave a certificate, then that, people relied upon that. So I think that's a problem.
All right, thank you. I know, sorry, Vice Chair, you had further questions?
I just had a question. Is Attorney General's represented left, right? Okay. Okay, no, I'm good, Chair. Thank you.
Members, any further questions here? All right, seeing none, we are going to recess very briefly and then come back for decision-making.
Committee hearing for decision-making. First up, we have HB 2214 relating to housing. We are, my recommendation will be to pass out an HD1 with a few amendments, will defect the date, provide technical amendments for clarity and consistency, clarify the repeal and reenactment date, which is worded a little bit clunky. And then lastly, remove the state from the tracking and monitoring of the use of the credits. And on this one, I just want to note that it potentially needs further work to determine whether the counties can do all of the tracking. But based on what we heard, that the county does have a hand in all 201H permitting within HCDAs, it seems simpler to have one entity doing all of that, all of that tracking. So, given that, any questions or comments, members? Vice Chair, further vote?
Members, voting on HB 2214, Chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments. Chair and Vice Chair vote aye. Representative Keela.
Aye.
Representative Kitagawa is excused. Representative Miyake.
Aye.
Representative Onishi.
Aye.
Representative Todd.
Aye.
Representative Matsumoto.
Aye.
Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thanks, Vice Chair. Next item on the, for decision-making is HB 2548 relating to accessory dwelling units. I recommend passing it with amendments, will defect the date, and provide technical amendments for clarity and consistency. Vice Chair, for the vote?
Members, voting on HB 2548, Chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments. Noting the excused absence of Representative Kitagawa, who will be noted excused for the remainder of this hearing. Are there any members voting nay? Are there any members voting with reservations?
Chair.
Noting the reservations of Representative Onishi, any other members voting with reservations? Chair, your measure is adopted.
And, sorry, I apologize, I did not ask for questions or comments. Rep. Onishi, do you want to make a comment on that?
Well, I'm just concerned about the BNF concern, about it being self-sustaining, and the lack of any information in terms of the amount that we would have to appropriate, you know, terms, et cetera, how, you know, I mean, in terms of loans, you know, I mean, it's paid over longer periods of time, and you need huge amounts of money to initiate a fund. So with our current situation, it might be very difficult.
Yep, thanks, Rep. Onishi. Your concerns are noted, and I recognize that this will be difficult to pass in a tight financial year like this, but we'll move it on for the Finance Committee at the end to determine. Next on the agenda, HB 2218 relating to the Hawaiian Homes Commission Act. We will, I recommend passing out an HD1 simply with a defected date. Vice Chair for the... oh, sorry, members' comments or questions? Vice Chair, for the vote?
Members, voting on HB 2218, Chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments. Are there any members voting no with reservations? Chair, your measure is adopted.
All right, on HB 2571, we did hear a number of potential issues with this bill. One, the bill places the program in Chapter 515, which relates to discrimination in real property transactions and is under the purview of the Civil Rights Commission. This isn't in the DOH, Chapter 321. The Department of Health had some concerns and recommended that this be implemented by the Disabilities and Communications Access Board, and then the AG also expressed some concerns over standards for distributing funds. On that said, I think the program is a worthy program, it just certainly needs more work on behalf of the introducer to work through these concerns, so we will be deferring this bill. Next on the agenda is HB 1631 relating to housing. My recommendation is to pass out an HD1 with a defected date on here. Members, questions or comments?
Chair, I have some reservations about this bill, just given that it doesn't seem like DOE is under any requirement to work with School Facilities Authority, and that's what they're saying is the problem here. So I'll be voting with reservations on this bill.
Okay, thank you, Vice Chair, given that. Other members?
Chair.
Rep. Onishi?
Yeah, I have the same concern, and I understand that the way the wording in the language was to follow Act 307, but I don't think that needs to be the basis for them to do a study statewide, and I would like to see other counties, the other counties be included in this, you know, if they're going to do a comprehensive look at lands available for housing development for teachers, I mean, I would rather see it statewide so we can plan accordingly to help them.
Okay, great.
Yeah, I'll be voting with reservations also.
Thank you, yeah. Noting those reservations, we can include in the committee report, one, that we need further clarification from DOE on their ability to coordinate with the School Facilities Authority, and two, on the transfer of the Act 307 lands, whether it's worth trying to broaden the number of counties included in that reporting. in the, at, uh, reporting. Um, members, any other questions or comments? All right, Vice Chair, for the vote.
Any other members, uh, sorry, members, shoot, voting on, uh, HB sixteen thirty-one, Chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments. Are there any other members voting no with reservations? Uh, Chair, your measure is adopted.
All right, uh, last item on the agenda is HB eighteen thirty-eight relating to zoning. My recommendation is to defect the date, uh, to the year three thousand. And just for those of you on Zoom watching, um, that just means that this bill will be up for, um, continued dialogue, uh, um, and eventually that if this were to pass into law, that date will be, um, corrected to a, um, appropriate implementation date. Um, and one more, um, amendment, there is, hmm, lacks clarity on the definition of transientification rental unit because each county defines that, um, uh, in their own various ways. So we will add language that, um, clarifies that transientification rental unit means essentially all of the ways that the counties are defining it, such as short-term rental home, short-term vacation rental, transientification rental, transientification unit, or transientification use as defined by county ordinance. Um, members, any questions or comments?
Rep. Onishi.
Chair, um, I just wanted to, to express my concern because, um, as the previous, uh, Chair for Tourism, this has been an issue that we dealt with a lot. Um, even to the point where we tried to work with the counties on enforcement and was willing to prov- the state be willing to provide them funds for enforcement, which they didn't want to take. Uh, we also worked with the, uh, the hosting platforms to establish these conforming use, MOUs, um, which not every county was willing to accept. Um, so I think there is a lot of room for the counties to improve their enforcement on this, and so I'm going to be voting with reservations on this because I think they haven't really taken responsibility, and this is not the way that we should be addressing the situation.
Okay, thank you, Rep. Onishi. Members, further comments or concerns? Rep. Matsumoto.
Thank you, Chair. I also have a few concerns after hearing the testimony and reading through everything. I will be voting yes at this time, but I'm going to be watching this bill very carefully.
Okay. Members? Yeah, and I do just want to clarify, you know, some of the testimony referred to retroactively removing this. This bill is not retroactively removing it, right? It's, all we're doing is giving the counties the authority to remove, um, uh, non-conforming use certificates from vacation rentals. And I do want to recognize what, um, David Lewis mentioned regarding the potential for constitutional issues, um, and that Judge Watson did say that in the Honolulu case, that would have been a taking for that specific case, right? For the change in duration. Um, and certainly, um, implementation is everything here, right? And, and it will be up to the counties to determine, um, an appropriate timeframe and manner to possibly remove, um, non-conforming uses from certain areas. And, um, by giving this authority, they have, will have to do their own constitutional analysis to do so. Um, that said, this will go on to the Judiciary and Hawaiian Affairs Committee, um, and they can further look into the constitutionality of it. Um, members, any further questions or comments? All right, Vice Chair, for the vote.
Members, voting on HB eighteen thirty-eight, Chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments, noting, uh, the reservations of Representative Onishi. Are there any other members choosing to vote with reservations? Voting no. Chair, your measure is adopted.
Great, um, well, thank you guys for a successful hearing. Thank you all for coming out today. Um, seeing no further business, this hearing is adjourned.